Jamie, Joanne's just trying to get on right now.
She's in.
Oh, there she is.
Twice.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm back. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to, we have two meetings this evening. The first one is the Committee of Adjustment meeting, and then we have our regular meeting of council. So we will start with the Committee of Adjustment. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by Council Madden, seconded by Council Noble, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the Committee of Adjustment hearing agenda Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Ratify the minutes. I have a motion moved by Council Manly, seconded by Council Wensink, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the Committee of Adjustment hearing minutes of Monday, November 9th, 2020. Are there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. A minor variance, MV092020, I have a motion moved by Council Noble, seconded by Council Madden. It's a recommendation of the Planning Department that the Committee of Adjustment approve minor variance application, MV092020 as submitted. Welcome, Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be sharing my screen with the presentation now. There you go. So this is application MV092020, the owners Hope Holding Limited. The location is at 43 and 45 through 55 Main Street, South in Alexandria. It's designated commercial district in official plan and it's zoned village core area and now zoning by law. The purpose of this application is because it's recovered by consent application B452020. So this is a severance for lands that have merged through impact since the 1970s. So the lots used to be separate in the 1970s, but how it happens sometimes when there's the same ownership name, they have merged through higher ministry. So in order for the lands to be compliant with our zoning by law after the severance, the purpose of this minor variance is to seek relief from our zoning by law for the severed lot area from the required 450 meter square to the proposed 397 meter squared and the retained lot area from the required 450 meter square to the proposed 376 meters squared. Okay, so just to show you the location, it's on Alexandria Main Street, south at the corner of St. Paul. And in front of you are the several lands and the retained lands as existing. So no structural or change of use is permitted. It's purely a legal severance. So the four tests of the minor variance, the committee may approve this minor variance if the application conforms with the intent and purpose of the official plan. So since nothing is changing, it does conform with the county's official plan. Same goes for the zoning by law, does comply with this intent and purpose of our zoning by law. And number three, is it suitable and desirable for the surrounding area? So since there is no structural changes or change of use and it's purely a legal severance, it is fully desirable for the surrounding area. And likewise, it's minor in nature since there is nothing being changed. It's just a legal adjustment. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the Planning Department that this application be approved as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Kasia. I'll ask, I see, I know that Mr. Hope has his agent on the call. Is there something you would like to add prior to council asking any questions at this point? Assume no, okay. Any, are there any questions from members of count? Oh, there you are. Kibby, welcome. You're still muted.
Okay, there. Sorry about that. This, she's basically set out exactly the situation. These were two separate properties up until the 70s. One of them was in Wally Hope Senior's name personally, and the other one he put into the company, and then at one point he decided to put the, the part that we're dealing with now into the company name, which caused the two parcels to merge again. The severance has been approved by the counties for a front yard setback. The counties demanded that they get everything conveyed to them up to the front of the building. So that, that takes away our front yard setback because of the existing building, there, there's no room for side yard setback because it goes right up to the edge of the sidewalk. Nothing structurally is changing about the buildings. It'll just be the legal title that is going to be changing. I think Mr. Hope has intentions of selling the parcel that we're dealing with to a third party somewhere in the, in the future. So he's just trying to get the housekeeping done.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions from the members of the committee? Seeing none, straight forward.
Oh, I like when it goes like this.
Well, I have 12 questions, Kibby. So I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, and no old business, no new business, no, no submotion, none. Adjournment, I have a motion moved by Council Massey, seconded by Council Manly. There being no further business to discuss, the Committee of Adjustment meeting was adjourned at 6:52 PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. So, quick meeting, so we now have seven minutes to kill prior to the regular meeting of council. So if you're at home, everyone, go, go out, get a drink and then come back. Thank you. Was I muted there?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Again, we'll get this meeting under, going. I'd like to welcome all members of staff as well as the members of council. And to anyone watching on Facebook Live, like to call this meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I have a motion to accept the agenda moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Council Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, November 23rd, 2020. So any discussion on the agenda? Yes, Council Massey?
Mr. Mayor, just making sure that we did, we're going to add under new business, the proposal from the RRCA?
Yes, that's under 98.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to adoption of the previous minutes, I have a motion moved by Council Massey, seconded by Council Noble, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council, November 9th, 2020. Special meeting of council, November 18th, 2020. Committee of the whole meeting, November 18th, 2020. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Right, there are no delegations. Moving on to staff reports, Administrative Department. I have a motion moved by Council Noble, seconded by Council Manly, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number AD202019, and that Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the 2021 meeting schedule as attached in Schedule A. Sarah, I believe you're speaking to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the standard meeting schedule for 2021. No changes really from last year, other than we have put in a council meeting where we normally would not have had one during Roma and OGR, A, being that they will be virtual conferences.
Okay, perfect. Are there any questions? And I spoke, we, we have two meetings in July. I would assume that if we don't require the second meeting, that we would, we would just not have it.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to Community Services Department, number one, 2020 budget preapproval to hire development and marketing coordinator. I have a motion moved by Council Manly, seconded by Council Madden, that Council accepts staff reports CS2020-27, and that Council preapproves the sum of $80,000 in the 2021 Economic Development Capital Budget to, to hire the development and marketing coordinator to implement develop and marketing strategy. Welcome, Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report was initially presented to council at the last committee of the whole meeting for discussion. And we are looking for approval, actually a preapproval of the 2021 budget for the funds to hire a development and marketing coordinator to move forward the development and marketing strategy that was approved by council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? From members of council. Council Wensink?
Just a comment again, that I don't feel we need an additional staff person, that I feel we have the resources among the township staff at the county's level, and that we have the opportunity to perhaps hire marketing resources on a contract basis as needed. There's a lot of uncertainties in this year with, with COVID. And we know that development could potentially be delayed as well. Building supplies are not as easy to get. I think there's a lot of uncertainties that I'm not in favor with adding another staff position. And I've also heard other counselors speak against adding further positions to our, sorry, to our council staff.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Well, if, if you'd read the strategy, it's pretty clear in there that resources, outside resources are going to be required in order to action this plan. It's not something that can be done internally because there simply is not the time in the day, nor the particular expertise in order to make this happen. This is, this is, you know, development, residential development in particular, has been identified as a top strategic priority. We've invested in creating a strategy, and if we do not put the adequate resources towards actioning it, this project will sit on the shelf, and that is just a simple, real waste of taxpayers' dollars to do that. And, and, and we need to get moving on this. There is an urgency to moving this strategy forward. We have opportunities specifically identified in Maxwell, further on in Alexandria. It takes years to get this development, these kinds of developments underway, and we simply cannot afford to wait.
Thank you. Council Wensink?
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Karma. I just feel that, yes, the resources do need to be committed to this important project. I'm not sure adding a staff member is the answer. I have read the strategy. I think it's excellent. It speaks to developers. It speaks to talking to actual landowners because we don't even own this land that we're trying to promote. And it also mentions definitely accessing marketing resources, but nowhere in the strategy, in the strategy didn't say add another staff member. I think there's different ways to add the resources to this important project.
Okay, any further comments from members of council? I just, I, I just, I guess my, my question is, Council Wensink is just where, where are we going to get those? Who's going to do this for us?
Well, it does speak to the township staff, the economic development staff. It talks about also reaching out to the county's level. They have resources. I didn't get an answer when I asked that question at committee of the whole. The counties also have access to resources through planning, marketing. They talk about reaching out to a developer. So it doesn't mean one person can be all these things. It means perhaps looking at working with different individuals at different stages of the marketing plan. But really, a lot of following this plan does fall on the community improvement committee that we already have in place, as well as township staff organizing and delegating when it comes to that point when we're ready for marketing.
I just don't think the expertise is there for something of that nature. That's just my opinion, of course, but I, I really don't think that expertise. And as far as the counties, I mean, they're, they are there as a resource, but they're not there as the, the ultimate person to, or the, the, the people that we can lean on to, to bring us the strategy or to, you know, solely focus on it. I mean, I think it's a big job to do it. Are there any other members of council that have comments? Deputy Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it, I, I know what you're saying, Council Wensink. Like, I'm, I'm never eager to add staff on, onto the payroll either. This is just a one-year contract position. It's not, it's not a permanent employee. It is a specific resource for a certain period of time. If, if, if we actually, you know, dumped this specific project in the lap of economic development and communications, people like Tara Kirkpatrick and, and Ann Leduc would have to basically put aside their day, their day-to-day tasks in order to make this happen. Things like the community improvement plan would suffer, the regional incentives plan, you know, going around and being in touch with local businesses and, you know, creating sort of, you know, business inventories. These people, these two staff members have a lot on their platter already, and I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, changing their priorities so, so that the rest of the job that they do on a daily basis suffered. So I, I do think it's, it's an important priority.
Council Madden?
Mr. Mayor, Council Wensink, I will just add, the community development committee is also, it's all volunteer. Everybody there is otherwise employed, and there's no space, I'm going to say, for them to take on something like this. And it's, it's not something that you can ask a volunteer board to do when we're looking at what we're trying to get done here.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll read the motion again. That Council accepts staff report CS2020-27, and that Council preapproves the sum of $80,000 in the 2021 Economic Development Capital Budget to hire the development and marketing coordinator to implement the development and marketing strategy. There's no further questions. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? I'm in favor. Motion is carried. Moving on to MRA C 2020 capital transfers. I have a motion moved by Council Madden, seconded by Council Wensink, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number CS2020-28, and that Council approves the capital budget transfers recommended by the Recreation Advisory Committee. According to the information listed below, transfer of 6,200 to Glen Robertson to proceed with the retrofitting of LED lights, $3,000 from Alexandria Recreation, 1,000 from Father Gotti Recreation, 1,000 from Ligon Recreation, and 1,200 from Maxwell Recreation. Okay, Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we do at this time of the year, we meet with the municipal recreation associations to go over the capital projects that have been undertaken over the year. Glen Robertson came to us with a proposal to retrofit the existing lights that they have into LED lighting. This fits in with the township's energy program. And we're recommending that some surpluses or leftover funds from the other recreation associations actually be put towards this program. And Glen Robertson would then be able to execute the LED retrofit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Council Massey?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Anne, I think there's a lot of, I don't know if there still exists, but there's a lot of programs through Hydro Ontario that we can probably benefit and get a, some kind of rebate on. I don't know if you could.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that would go, that would be done in conjunction with the electrician, and Glen Robertson is actually looking into that application right now.
Okay. Council Manly?
Just to confirm, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to confirm, Anne, so the, the organizations that have transferred money to to this project, whatever, they're all in favor of that, right? That those are, they've all met on that and they, they're all in favor?
Yes, these are volunteer transfers.
Okay, perfect.
I think it's a testament to all the volunteers of our municipal recreation association committees is that they, you know, they come together every year and, you know, they do this kind of stuff at the end of the year. We don't see a lot of our committees going out and spending money at the end just for the sake of spending it. So I think it's been really, we're very lucky to have what we have, and I know Bob Linney is a big part of that. And so, you know, I congratulate him as well as all the committee members for doing what they do and, in essence, running recreation in all of our little hamlets and towns, you know, as volunteers. So I, I commend them for that. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Anne. Moving on to the Treasury Department, I have a motion moved by Councilor Wensink, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, the bylaw 452020, being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of funds for financing of capital tandem truck. We read a first, second, and third time and adopted in open council this 23rd day of November, 2020. Welcome, Kim.
I'm here, sorry.
But are you really there?
I am.
There we go.
Okay, during the 2020 budget, council approved the purchase of a tandem truck for the Public Works Department in the upset amount of $275,000. This is to be funded through long-term debt. The successful bidder came in with a bid of 271,821 plus HST. With the HST rebate, the township needs to borrow the full 275,000 amount. So the Royal Bank of Canada was contacted rather than Infrastructure Ontario because we could arrange financing as they could accommodate cash flow very, very quickly, roughly a one-week turnaround. So the loan is amortized over a 20-year period with a term of two 10-year periods. It said in the report, the, the It said in the report that the interest rate would not exceed 3%. Today's rate is 2.47%. So that's what's going to be in the bylaw. So I'm requesting that council approve this bylaw so we could fund this tandem truck.
Okay, thank you for your report. Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just curious about the 20-year amortization. Seems like a long spread for, you know, a purchase that size.
Well, that has to do with, we also had a fire truck of $475,000 this year, plus we have the Maxwell Water Project, so our debt limit, we have to kind of spread it out.
You have to spread it out. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Planning, Building, and Bylaw Enforcement Department, Zoning Amendment Z102020. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopt zoning bylaws Z102020, and that bylaws Z102020 be read a first, second time, third time, and enacted open council this 23rd day of November 2020. Welcome, Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Amendment Z102020 was approved by the Planning Committee on November 9th, and I haven't received any further public comments. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any comments from members of council? Counselor Massey?
The, did anybody look into these, the, the little parcel of land that comes, that goes through Mr. Menard's property? Because I think that's going to be an issue. I know it does, I didn't talk to him yet there, but I'm sure that's going to come up. Did anybody take a look at that? Because that might be a problem.
I contacted the counties and they haven't got back to me. I looked on the mapping. It looks like it belongs to the IHA lease land. So I can provide a report later on to council if requested.
Okay, just that, to you, Mr. Mayor, just that, maybe, I think, out of respect, I think we should talk to the owner, because that's basically, and I know it doesn't belong to that, but he's been using it for so long, so it could become a problem. I think everybody knows what I'm talking about. It's just a 50-feet-wide strip there. It might even be in some people's yard, that, that piece of land. Just, just in case that the IHA wants to build an entrance there, that might. So if we can deal with that, like, I'm, I'm in favor of this, this resolution. It's just that I'd like really to tidy it up, that little part.
Okay, so he would have been circulated through this zoning amendment, but I can definitely reach out to him personally and just to make him aware of this plan.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to Zoning Amendment Z112020. I have a motion moved by Counselor Massey, seconded by Counselor Noble, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopt zoning bylaws Z112020, and that bylaws Z112020 be read a first, second, third time, and enacted in open council this 23rd day of November 2020. Kasia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So similarly, this zoning amendment was approved by the Planning Committee on November 9th, and there was no other public comments. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Okay, did you have a comment, Counselor Noble? No, okay, thank you. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to Zoning Amendment Z122020. I have a motion moved by Counselor Noble, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopt zoning bylaw Z122020, and that bylaws Z122020 be read a first, second, third time, and enacted in open council this 23rd day of November 2020. Kasia?
Thank you. So zoning amendment Z122020 was adopted by the Planning Committee in November 9th, and also there was no other comments from the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, because I think this is a .5, .85 parcel of land. Is that correct? Oh, this is just the zoning change. Sorry.
Yes.
Never mind. Never mind. Thank you. I'm good.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to Part Lock Control Bylaw 472020. I have a motion moved by Counselor Manley, seconded by Counselor Madden, the Bylaw 472020 being a bylaw to authorize the lifting of Part Lock Control 2020 be read a first, second, third time, and enacted in open council this 23rd day of November 2020. Kasia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this one is a little bit different. The proposal is to repeal Bylaw 392020 that was adopted by council on October 13th, and to adopt Bylaw 472020. This is in order to correct a technical error in the wording of Bylaw 392020. So the difference in the wording is that the new bylaw references Parts 1 and Part 2 for Parcel A, and Parts 3 and Part 4 for Parcel B, while the bylaw from October 13th only referenced Part A for Parcel A and Part 3 for Parcel B. And there was also some wording added just to limit the further subdivision of the lot itself. And as part of Part Control, it is obligatory to have a legal review. I wasn't aware of this. So moving forward for all Part Control applications, there will be a legal review, which is also part of, part of the fee by law for the township. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the member of council? Counselor Madden?
Just a quick question. I noticed that the, there's a little, sort of, call it a dip into Part 2 that's subject to a right-of-way. Is that of any concern to us or no?
No, the bylaw was revised by both the lawyer and the CA, so I wouldn't be concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Because lawyers never make a mistake, Counselor Madden.
Exactly.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so Consent Agenda. I have a motion moved by Counselor Manley, seconded by Counselor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives the items from the Consent Agenda for information purposes only. Are there any questions on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none? Oh, yes, Counselor Massey?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, did we jump over a resolution like?
No, that's in 998. We're, we're in number eight.
No, I know, but what about the 2020-34 on the Etsy Boulevard?
I don't see that on my.
Oh, that was on the, we just did. I have the old agenda, I guess.
I just did it. We just did it for a Part Lock Control Bylaw.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. So any further questions on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to New Business, Support of the RRCA Bill 229. I'm not sure who's going to speak to this. Sarah? Or is that you, Counselor Massey?
Yeah, I can, I can give, we had our monthly board meeting from the Risen River Conservation Authority last week. And the provincial government is trying to, to put down a, a new policy regarding the conservation authorities. They want to make amendments to, to the Act. And then it, and the Act, I think the discussion was at the board meeting that apparently there's one conservation authority in the Toronto region or something that is kind of going rogue or something. And then the government wants to take control of the conservation authority. But we feel as, as board members that they're going a little bit too far. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read on this, but there's a lot of very important changes that they're, they want to introduce and they want to basically go with a proclamation. And they want to hurry up. So I think it's very important that if the council, the discount will pass a motion or pass the resolution to circulate and then say that we're not in favor of this. If you read it, you'll see there's a major.
I will read the motion that's here. I hope everyone's ready for it, because it's long. I have a motion moved by Counselor Massey, seconded by Counselor Wensing, whereas the, whereas the province has introduced Bill 229 Protect, Support, and Recover from COVID-19 Act Schedule 6 Conservation Authorities Act. Whereas the legislation introduces a number of changes and new sections that could remove and/or significantly hinder the conservation authority's role in regulating development, permit appeal process, and engaging in review and appeal of planning applications. Whereas we rely on the watershed expertise provided by local conservation authorities to protect residents, property, and local natural resources on a watershed basis by regulating development and engaging in reviews of applications submitted under the Planning Act. Whereas the changes allow the minister to make decisions without CA watershed data and expertise. Whereas the legislation suggests that the minister will have the ability to establish standards and requirements for non-mandatory programs which are negotiated between the conservation authorities and municipalities to meet local watershed needs. Whereas municipalities believe that the appointment of municipal representatives on CA boards should be a municipal decision, and the Chair and Vice Chair of the CA Board should be duly elected. Whereas the changes to the duty of members contradicts the fiduciary duty of a CA Board Member to represent the best interests of the conservation authority and its responsibility to the watershed. Whereas conservation authorities have already been working with the province, development sector, and municipalities to streamline and speed up permitting and planning approvals through Conservation Ontario Client Service and Streamlining Initiative. Whereas changes to the legislation will create more red tape and cost for the conservation authorities and their municipal partners, and potentially result in delays in the development approval process. And whereas municipalities value and rely on the natural habitats and water resources within our jurisdiction for the health and well-being of residents. Municipalities value the conservation authority's work to prevent and manage the impacts of flooding and other natural hazards. And municipalities value the conservation authority's work to ensure safe drinking water. Therefore, be it resolved that the province continue to work with conservation authorities to find workable solutions to reduce red tape and create conditions for growth prior to passing Schedule 6 of Bill 229 Budget Measures. That the province respect the current conservation authority municipal relationships, and that the province embrace their longstanding partnership with the conservation authorities and provide them with the tools and financial resources they need to effectively implement their watershed management role. I certainly hope I wasn't on mute to that whole thing.
Can you repeat that middle part?
Okay, are there any questions, further questions on this? Deputy Mayor Williams, then Counselor Manley?
Well, there, there's an awful lot in that motion, an awful lot. And, and, and not that I, I don't, it, it sounds like something that we probably ought to support. However, I'd kind of like to see a staff report related to, to this, just so that we know, what are they talking about in terms of changing the relationship with municipalities? For example, I, I'm not sure what, what's, what's possibly being proposed there. Things like that, I, I don't know. I, I just, it, it's, it's a bit much to kind of absorb all at once. And we only received it just today, I believe. And I, I, I'd like a little more information.
Mr. Mayor, find me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the, like, basically what they're doing, the provincial government, and I know that I love them, but they're, they're trying to take over control of the conservation authorities in one word. Like, they, they want to take over the conservation authorities. They want to overrule any decision that the conservation authority does. Let's say that even permit in flood lanes and stuff like that. If we turn the applicant down, they will overrule us. It's just like OMB Board, but they can take any decision and there's no, no way to fight it. So if you read the, I don't know if I can send you the email, but if you read the, what, line by line, it's, it's, even for me, it's, it seems like it's a power grab, which is like, we all went through the clear-cutting byline with trying to protect the environment and stuff. So I think this is very important. And it's time-sensitive too, Karma. I know that it'd be nice, that's what I asked the RRCA's to send somebody at council just to explain the big lines. But it's like on the table now, I think, in Toronto. So we have, be it, be it, you know, that's it.
Counselor Manley?
Yeah, there is so much there that I, I just, to, to vote on something. Whatever, it's, 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 I mean, I would like to know more information for sure, Jacques. And I understand the time crunch on it or whatever. But I don't know.
Any other further comments? Counselor Madden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've seen, if you've been looking at the news, there's been examples of this in Toronto, where development has been pushed ahead by the government, by ministers making decrees. And I, I haven't had time to look at the bill. But they're putting this in with the recovery bill to change the conservation authority setup. Seems a little strange to me. There's a little too much going on there. To me, this is, basis of this is, is encouraging them to put this to discussion and debate as opposed to just making a decree. So, I mean, if that's what we're encouraging them to do, to me, that's, let's ask them to do it.
Okay, any further comments? Deputy Mayor?
When are they, when is this bill going to vote? Like, how, how critical time-wise is this, Jacques?
See, I got a draft bill here. It was tabled on November 6th, and the first reading was November 5th, like, three, three weeks ago. And they want to get done their holding meetings with municipalities up to the November 17th of last week. And basically, they, they don't probably go by proclamation too, so. Like, it, like, like Mike said, like, they can overrule any decision the conservation authority does. Like, if, if, it seemed, it's very weird anyways. Like, they're even talking about the Clean Water Act. You know, they're, they're taking away duties that the conservation authorities and then. I don't know. It's, 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 it looks bad. And we're just simply voting on a motion, I think, to a resolution to pass along to the provincial government. We're not deciding this ourselves tonight, I think, Karma. It's just like when we were dealing with the South Nation Conservation Authority a few weeks ago. Like, we're not making a decision, we're just basically giving our support. If you support the RRCA, they're the ones that know best. And on that board, there's two mayors and like, and they're all pretty much conservatives. So, and they were opposed to this, so it tells you that kind of funny.
Okay, are there any, is there any further comment?
Just.
Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just that, yeah, if, if that's what we're doing, if, if we're just sort of lending our support to the RRCA and maybe slowing the process, trying to slow the process down a little bit, that might be a good idea. And I agree with Counselor Madden, who says that to throw this in with COVID, a COVID recovery, something's not, something's not right there or whatever, so I, I, yeah, that's fine.
Just, just, just on that, Jeff, basically, we're just want to raise our concerns. If there's any to be raised, but there is concern to be raised. It's just that we want to let, know the provincial government that we'll take a step back and give us time to look at this policy before we do move on. They're trying to go too fast.
Okay, Counselor Noble?
Yeah, no, I'm just reading it, and that's like their last line, the, the ask, is where we're requesting that the CA's be consulted. So that's, that's what I believe is all we're doing tonight, is just throwing our support behind them and, and telling the government to, exactly what Jacques said, take. and telling the government to, exactly what Jacques said, take a step back. You can pass the bill, but just don't throw this in and try to hide it. Overreaching power, basically.
Good point. Okay, I will, final comment, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, that, that, that's all, that's good information, that's helpful as far as I'm concerned. Um, thank you, and uh, if, if we could just um, if you could just pass us ongoing information, Jacques, on this, I think that would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll call the vote.
What was the motion again?
Yeah. One, Brenda, you're on the ball. All those in favor of the motion? As read.
Oh.
Motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, can I add just one little bit of information? I, uh, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, uh, at, at last week's meeting at the R R C, I, I mentioned the fact that we introduce a uh, uh, tree replanting fund from our clear cutting bylaw, the ten percent that we, uh, tree planting fund. And all the other municipalities, there, we're all excited, so they're going to introduce one too. And uh, they even were, and they're supposed to send the Lisa from the R R C to present their tree planting program, because I thought that if they would come out more and present this, there'd be a lot more people getting on board, buying trees, because they're like a dollar a piece or something, it's very. Uh, and then one of the members, I think, was from South Stormont or stuff, Dundas, they mentioned the fact that all the six uh, township within our S D and G, they should create a uh, a competition who, who can plant more trees. So anyways, so they were all uh, all happy with that and uh.
Good initiative, for sure. So, yeah, looking for, so. Okay, uh, thank you for those comments, uh, Counsel Massey. Notice of motion, our next regular public meeting of council is Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty at seven P M. And uh, there is no closed session tonight. Confirming bylaw of a motion moved by Counselor Madden and seconded by Counselor Wensink that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receive bylaw forty six twenty twenty and that council adopt bylaw forty six twenty twenty being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, ratify matters dealt with by resolution and that bylaw forty six twenty twenty be read a first, second, third time and enacted in open council this twenty third day of November twenty twenty. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. And uh, we have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion moved by Counselor Wensink, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. There being no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at seven thirty eight P M. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you to uh, all members of council and thank you to staff. It was a quick meeting and thank you to everyone who was watching on Facebook. Have a great week. Wear your mask, we're in the yellow zone now, so let's keep it there or go down further.
Download the COVID app.
Yeah.
Did that, and thanks to the road crew for today.
Yep, and uh, all right, have a great night, everyone. Take care.